All right, it is a little after seven and we are ready to call this meeting to order. This is our July work session. We have a few items to get through tonight. I don't think it'll take very long. And then, I've been told in advance, we don't have a need for executive session tonight, but we probably will have some things to talk about next Monday night. So, let's get started. Let's go on to old business. Art, I will call you up for item number one.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, sir. The first item that we have under old business is for TCO Design Review, 25003 at 5290 Sycamore Road. The second one would be 25004 at 5300 Sycamore, which is next door. Two major updates for both of those properties, sir and council. The variance request has been amended to 35 feet. Council might remember that the request previously for both parcels was to vary from 45 feet to 25 feet. Both 5290 and the subsequent 5300 address are now requested to be at 35 feet, so further off the right-of-way. Also, for both parcels, both side setbacks meet or exceed the side setback requirements of 10 feet. Staff did meet with the owner and his engineer and other partners after one of the previous council meetings. The applicant did amend the survey. They made some slight adjustments to be able to have the footprints of the proposed new homes, to be able to meet the setbacks on the sides, and also to have a further setback from the right-of-way. There is still a request of variance, but the variance amount is lessened. Again, the minimum is 45 from the right-of-way. The request for both parcels is 35. Here's the aerial of 5290. It's near the intersection of Sycamore and Aplin. And again, and one other thing, too, this would be on 5300, the garage, there was a question about the garage, and I'll get to that, would be gone. Maybe jump ahead a bit. So, I want to show the amended survey showing the proposed footprints of the, of both homes. 5290 is the smaller triangular lot, and it meets both the side setbacks, both side setbacks. And again, the front setback is requested to be at 35 feet from the right-of-way as opposed to the 25, which was previously requested. So again, further back from the right-of-way. And again, there are two existing homes on both of these parcels that have been there for quite some time, and I forget the exact number, but they sit very close to the road, approximately 20-ish or so feet from the right-of-way. So, these new homes that are proposed would push further back. Here we have a couple of renderings of the first home. And again, this would, is being requested for design review, and the staff recommendation, Mayor and Council, is to approve such that the final designs will substantially resemble the attached exhibits labeled 1 through 3, and again, the reduction of the setback from 35 to 45. That is all we have on the first item, sir. If it pleases the council, I'll go ahead and, well, I don't know if we can do these one at a time or not, but since they're next door to each other, I wanted to mention the two things together since they coincide.
Can you go back to the site plan?
Yes, sir.
I know, I think, in a previous meeting, Meg asked about the garage.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that the same garage? It's just now going to be attached to the home, or is that a new garage?
This would be a new garage attached to, if you're looking at, are you, this, yes, sir. That would be the new garage attached to the proposed new home. There is currently a detached garage that goes with the existing home, which will go away.
I think Meg has a question.
I thought there was just one garage, and it was detached at the second home.
Yes, ma'am, at 52.
And that's the garage that will go away?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Right, okay.
Yes, Gary.
So, Art, I guess last month, we dealt with the property right next to this. They had the reduction from the four-story condos to the townhouses and the zero-lot houses, and there was a proposal there to reduce the setback, which I think was either denied or reduced. Do you remember what that distance was on that property?
Just to memory. That was, I gotta look it up.
Okay. Relax. I mean, obviously, 35 was better than the 25 they had before. I don't recall if we gave them 35 on the other property. I still think 45 was better. It looked like there was still a bit of room that they could potentially be moved back. They weren't exactly 10 feet off the lines. There was 12 and a half on something, and the other one, you got the driveway there, and so potentially, those could be moved to reduce it further. I don't know that they can get 10 feet in the current configuration, but obviously, we were trying to keep them off of the sightlines on Sycamore as you're coming into that curve, but I'd like to know how this adjacent property plays into that, because that's going to be sticking out. Is that something you can find while we're discussing this, or you have to bring it back to us next week, or how long will that take to find?
I'm sorry, so they're going to Gary?
Is that something you can get, you can look up right now, or is that something you'll have to bring back to us next week?
Let me bring it to you next week, if that's okay. I want to make sure that we have those numbers correct for you.
All right. Thank you.
Or maybe sometime during the week, you can send that to us.
Sure, that'd be better.
We can have it in advance. Thank you, Gary. Any other questions? Meg, you got any? Yes, ma'am?
So, is that the basic differences with this are the setback and removing the garage for sure, and then you have here the revised lot line? So, the size of the house remains the same, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am. The size and the general aesthetics of the homes remain.
All right, anybody else? All right, let's move on to the next item. Art?
We talked about 5300 Sycamore, this, you know, in conjunction with 5290. Would the council like to run over that one, too? Okay. So, the next item we have, I'm sorry, I'll stay here. Again, this is 5300 Sycamore, which is next door to the previous item. This is the existing home, and then the garage that's been in question, which will go away. Or is proposed to go away. Again, the survey and site plan at 5300 here, this is the proposed new footprint of the proposed home. 35-foot setback requested from 45, again, pushed further back than when we previously had a request of the 25. Just over 28 feet on the side setback here, and 10 feet on the other side setback. And this garage is proposed to be attached with the new home. And this is a rendering of the proposed home at 5300 Sycamore. And Mayor and Council, the staff recommendation is approval with the final designs substantially resembling the exhibits, again, labeled 1 through 3, and the reduction of the setback from 35 to 45 feet. I'll go back to the, that concludes for 5300.
All right, outside of the setback on Sycamore Road, any questions about this one? I tried to go back myself, Gary, and find it, and I just, I'm afraid I'm going to get too far back to get caught up where I need to be. All right, appreciate it. I think we'll move on to item number three, then.
Mr. Mayor, next item is AX 25-002, 5853 and 5875 Swannie Dam Road, and 5868 Henry Bailey. There we have the Public Shopping Center for a point of reference. This is the proposed rezoning and annexation area. Council saw this last month. The bulk of the property is Zone BG. There are parcels here, Zone R100 in the county, and then a sliver that is, also needs to be brought into the city as part of the request. Council may remember, at some point, some years back during some roadwork widening with Swannie Dam Road, we had this sliver kind of left over. So, the request partly is to bring all of that in as well, and it really cleans up the jurisdictional lines there. This is the daycare that was mentioned, and then the residential neighborhoods that are across the street. The Duncan and Quick Five oil change are right here. And this is on the red circle here, showing the area, again, that will be brought in, that was left over from the roadwork some years back. Mayor, this is the site plan from, I believe, 2008. Council may remember, this was a plan that was previously approved but not built. This is showing two points of ingress, ingress and egress off Swannie Dam Road. And again, this is from, I believe, 2008. The next few pictures are renderings of the proposed retail center. Again, the recommend action are listed here, and then there were some additional conditions that Councilmember Anderson had proposed as well. Those included no access to Kendrick's Road, that access to Swannie Dam shall be limited to one entrance and aligned with Lanier Valley Parkway, that a left turn lane from Swannie Dam Road shall be provided into the development along with other improvements as required by Gwinnett County DOT, and that prior to issuance of a land disturbance permit, a Level 2 traffic study with intersection control evaluation, or ICE, shall be provided, which explores safe ingress and egress options for the development, including analysis of the entrance from Swannie Dam Road into the development, and the intersection of Henry Bailey Road and Georgia Highway 20. And should a signal be warranted as a result of the proposed development, the developer shall contribute $50,000 toward the construction of a signal at the intersection. And that was in replacement of a previous action, a recommend action that we have here, item number five. It just goes a bit more detail. Staff has not heard back yet, but of course, one of the things in regards to traffic study is summer. School is still out until next month, I believe. And as part of, if the proposal is approved as part of the development review, the traffic study as outlined would be conducted, and then those results used as part of the development There was also a question in regards to notifications to some of the surrounding property owners. I think one of the citizens had mentioned whether or not the daycare center was notified. We do have the notification that was sent to the address, the address we have on file for the daycare. Those mailings were done April 16th, when we were doing the original planning commission and everything, and then, so I did want to mention that as well.
All right, thank you, Art. Any questions from City Council? Yes, Meg?
On the drawing where it had the daycare center and what's being proposed in the shopping center, the daycare center has a Georgia Pre-K certified program. So, I know there are limitations about selling alcohol within that distance. I'm not sure what the distance is. Has that been looked into?
I do remember that that came up. I did not follow up with that. I can get with Jane to see exactly what that distance is. I have a memory from past, but I don't know if that's changed, so I don't want to give council an incorrect number. And it may be based on some other local jurisdictions where I've worked as well, too, in addition to the state. But we're happy to check that to see about the distance requirement. I am somewhat familiar with the childcare regulations with some previous volunteer work in Rome and other places, so I am somewhat familiar with that. But I will, we'll double-check the number with the distance related to alcohol.
All right, thank you. And since you haven't heard from the developer this month, we still don't know, because he seemed kind of on the fence about the surfing addition to it, and, which was in the plan, and that's why he's calling it Sugar Bay. He wants a beach-themed shopping center. So, we still don't know if that's a definite or not.
That's true, and I plan to reach out to Mr. Park this week and see where he is landing with that. I know primarily the use would be for the retail center options, you know, a retail, restaurant, cafe, that type thing. And Mr. Park did indicate that his work background involves parks with water features and so on and everything, but primarily, this center is to be retail and restaurant. I will, we'll touch base with Mr. Park and see where he, again, where he's landing with the proposed water element that's shown on the site plan. That may be something that may not come to fruition, but we want to be able to give council a bit more clarity based on our conversations, so that next week, when Mr. Park is here, that he can, you know, fill in as well. I do know that he travels a good bit, so I also need to check with him to make sure that he will be in town next week, and if not, we can let council know if he may be out of the country.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Josh?
Yeah, I'm okay with all of the things that we discussed last meeting, but just kind of mulling over this this past month, I'm still conflicted on the access to Henry Bailey, just in general. And I think that's something I'd like council to consider if we want to move forward with this, just having one access point right there on Swannie Dam to come in and come out and not have it tied to Henry Bailey whatsoever. I think that will alleviate some concerns that Emerald Lakes has at that intersection, and also some other concerns with just Henry Bailey in general not being a very great and friendly road. So, I think that's definitely one thing. In regards to the alcohol, I understand the concern, but I don't believe that would be on the city to determine that at this stage. It'll be on the landlord and the tenant agreement, whatever they want to work out there. So, not really concerned about if they want to serve alcohol or not. They'd have to determine that when they get to that point.
Yes, sir, that's true. And to piggyback on that, and sorry, Meg, I didn't mention this, I think, let's come through your office, Jane, alcohol, is that right? So, the applicant has to apply, and if they, you know, we check, and, you know, staff checks, and if they don't meet it, then they don't get it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Josh, yeah, go ahead.
So, I agree with what you were saying there, Josh, about Henry Bailey. I'm not in favor of access on there unless they had a red light. Now, a whole different ballgame if they get a red light, right? So, but I don't want access to it without a red light. I have driven by several times the two entrances that they currently have on Swannie Dam Road, and they're not as far into where the, the gorge starts, is what I thought they were. I think they can safely use both of those. What I'd like our planning department to do and bring back for us at the next week's meeting and send out to us beforehand, if possible, is if you go out there and take pictures of both of those entrances on Swannie Dam that they already have there, those curb cuts, from each direction, right, and include in that picture where we can see the other, both sides of Swannie Dam, right, to determine how feasible it is there. But they look better to me than what I remembered or what I thought from looking at the picture, right? And if that is the case, I would much rather them have two entrances on Swannie Dam. Now, maybe the one that's further down Swannie Dam, they may, you can go left on that, but you can't go left from the one closest to 20, that it's right only something to that effect. But I think that's a lot more workable to me than putting traffic on Henry Bailey for the multiple reasons that I mentioned before. One, when you come out on Henry Bailey, there's no light there. There's a hill there that obstructs your view back to the red light on Swannie Dam Road, so you can't see the traffic coming at you until it's already over the hill. You also have the complications of the illegal U-turns that are happening there, and the people coming out of Emerald Lakes is just a bad intersection right now to be adding additional traffic to. If they got a red light, then I'm okay with them getting a later access to it, not unless there is a red light. Now, and I checked with Mr. Hartley, and we cannot condition that a red light be part of the zoning. We could condition study, but who knows how the study's going to go. So, I would rather just say no access on to Henry Bailey. They can use both the entrances on Swannie Dam, and that, to me, seems a safer way of getting through there than making a left turn onto 20 coming out of Henry Bailey.
I was just going to say, I think we talked about this last month, and
We did.
I think everybody agrees that it shouldn't be on Henry Bailey.
We said none on Kendricks.
Okay, I think
We said none on Kendricks.
Got it, got it. But I support that.
I think what we're talking about is completely only on Swannie Dam Road.
Yep.
I don't want any access on Henry Bailey.
Right.
But other than that, I'm okay with everything else that Mr. Anderson proposed last.
Yeah.
So, I think that's the only thing that we would need to add.
It'd be just good to see that visually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll get out next day or so and get those photos.
And if he's not around for Monday, then we can just table it for a council meeting in the future. All right, anybody else got anything? Comments, questions? All good comments. All right, next, we'll move on to item number four. This is Frank and Jane, and we were just waiting on this because you needed to advertise it, I think, but go ahead.
That's, that's correct, Mayor. We were waiting on this because it includes the adoption of the county's version of the noise ordinance, which includes consumer fireworks, and under state law, any noise ordinance that includes consumer fireworks, we have to run an ad. That ran twice in June, notifying the public that the action would be taken at your July meeting, and it's also on your website in accordance with state law. So, a public hearing is not required. You just have to notify the public that you would be, when you would be taking action on it, so that they can speak during the public comment section, but you do not have to have a public hearing, per se.
Appreciate it. Any questions of Frank on that item? All right, let's move on to new business, then. Item number five, Art.
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning request, 25-005 at 400 Riverside Road. This is a rezoning request from RS 200 to O&amp;I, and, sorry, Gary, I mentioned earlier, this is actually office institutional zoning as the request. The recommended, the property is located at 400 Riverside Road as parcel R 7347 001. The recommended action is the development shall substantially conform to the site plan in Exhibit 1 submitted with the application, particularly with its general features, placement, alignments. However, alterations necessary to accommodate other conditions specified herein are permitted without the additional mayor and council approval, provided they are within the spirit and context of the, as determined by the development planning department. The site plan for the 4.01 acre lot shall not contain more than 111 parking spaces. Prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, the applicant must install a five-foot wide sidewalk approximately 124 feet in length running Riverside Road in accordance with city standards to enable pedestrian traffic, and a 50-foot buffer along residential property to the west must be contained as required under Article 12. This is the parcel, this is Riverside coming in to Highway 20. The current zoning is RS 200 with BG zoning immediately to the east senior center, I believe. And then here are views of the property looking in from Riverside Road. The proposed use is a dental office and potential future office buildings. This is O&amp;I zoning office institutional. That zoning typically allows for professional offices, if you will, a dentist's office, doctor's office, engineer's office, and so on. Typically, it'll be a nine-to-five type operation that would be allowed in office institutional. And council may have larger printouts here. This is showing the proposed buildings that would go there. The VUZ are looking to have their one primary building for their dental practice with the potential for other buildings to go there in the future. They did indicate at planning commission that, again, their primary request is for their dental office and potential later, but they, that may or may not come to fruition in the near future. So, the request is to remove the single-family home that's on the property, add a new 6,500 square foot building to, they have an existing dental practice, they want to move there. And again, the proposed future buildings, which may come. And here is, just kind of zero in on the proposed building that the VUZ are looking at and wanted to have. And here are some renderings, yeah, that's the name of the practice. There were some questions in regards to the access into the property. You can see where Riverside comes into Georgia 20, and their frontage is roughly here. So, as part of, if the property is rezoned during development review, staff would coordinate with Gwinnett DOT, Georgia DOT, and our local folks here collectively to make sure that we have a good, safe ingress/egress for the property. So, that will be something that will be absolutely looked at during development review, should the property be rezoned. The recommendation is approval that the development shall substantially, substantially conform to the site plan as shown in Exhibit 1 submitted with the application, particularly regarding its general features, placement, alignments, as I mentioned earlier. Again, site plan development for parcel, for the 4.01 acre tract shall not contain more than 111 spaces. And then, prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, the applicant must install a five-foot sidewalk approximately 124 feet in length running Riverside Road in accordance with city standards to enable pedestrian traffic, and a 50-foot buffer along the residential property to the west must be maintained as required. And that concludes staff report for Riverside.
All right, thank you. Art, any questions? Yes, Gary?
All right, so, I have a few here. I was mentioning to you, Art, I guess, before the meeting started, but just for general discussion purposes here. I don't have a problem with the office that's on Riverside or close to 20. If this whole thing were on 20 diagonally, I'd have no problem with it. I'm not sure that I'm okay with those other two buildings back there. They show them as two-story. The first one, I assume, since it's half the square footage, that's a one-story building. The other two are two-story buildings, but that's a pretty, I believe, steep incline going up behind there, and sticking two-story buildings up on there is going to be kind of overlooking the senior home and also the single-family home, and then be fairly visible from the golf course as well, too. So, and I don't know off the top of my head if O&amp;I just let you cram as many buildings on there as you can, or if it's limited to the first, but I have no problem with what's in the front. I'm just not sure that I want to set the stage that I've already agreed to the other two without having more consideration of them. I don't know particularly if that's possible or how to do that. Frank, is there a way? If we looked at zoning this, because they only want to do the front now, they want to do the others as future, could it be zoned, conditioned? to do the others as future, could it be zoned conditional on the one building so that they'd have to come back for additional zoning requests on the others, or what can we do?
You could limit the height of the additional buildings. You could, you could grant them one building and require them to do a change in conditions for the additional buildings. What you would more typically see is just limiting the height of the additional buildings as opposed to just giving them one building and having them come back and changing conditions for the, to add more buildings. You would just say that they can't have more than one story or two-story or things of that nature typically.
That's typical, but are we allowed to do just the ones, and then require a review before the others go?
I would be more comfortable in limiting the height of the buildings as opposed to limiting it to one building, given the size of the property.
Okay. And so if we do that, and then they do decide that they want to do two-story, they'd have to come back for a conditional review. So those are my main concerns there is the additional ones. And again, it's because of the orientation of the property and that they're stacking deep on it as opposed to being more on the more heavily traveled roads. Those are my concerns there, but.
I think what we may want to do as well is get some elevation information back to you for next week because the grade change on that lot is significant, as you might have seen, Magnolia. So it could be that the entry is at grade for the second story on part of each building. So I think we looked at that initially as staff looked at this, so we can provide that information to you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item number six, Lanier Avenue. Art, you're busy tonight.
Yes, sir. All right, Mayor and Council, next item is RZ 25 dash 006 at 4822 Lanier Avenue. The recommended action, let me go back, the request is to rezone from RM to RS 72 for three units. The side setback request is requested as well from 10 to 7 feet. The recommended action is the development shall substantially conform to the site plan in exhibit one submitted with the application, particularly regarding its features, placement, and alignments. However, alterations necessary to accommodate other conditions as specified herein are permitted without additional mirroring and city council approval, provided they align with the spirit and context of the approval as determined by the planning department. The design review and approval is required to, prior to land development, elevation drawings, color, and material samples shall be submitted, as well as a site plan and a site and landscaping plan. At least three natural gas appliances shall be installed within each unit prior to the certificate of occupancy. The unit shall be constructed in such a way to create a unique character for each dwelling unit with a cohesive design elements to unify the dwellings into the overall development. The recommended approval of the requests, we also recommend approval of the following variance request, which is reducing the side setbacks from 10 feet to 7 feet. Applicant is Mr. William Matthews requesting again from RM to RS 72 for three proposed single-family detached homes. Go back, you see the existing homeless on the property. Just to give a point of reference, here is Peachtree Industrial, here is Lanier Avenue and the parcel in question. The surrounding properties include HM1, RM, R36, RS 100, and G. Again, the request is to remove the single-family home and divide into three detached lots. This is the proposed site plan showing the proposed three new homes. Again, there is a request to reduce the setback from 10 feet to 7 feet for the three lots. This particular application almost suits, is almost RS 100, but the cost, our ordinance doesn't allow for reductions in the acreage and widths. The next least dense zoning is RS 72, so it's very close to RS 100. The recommended action again is to approval, is for approval. As I stated before, this did have a recommendation of approval from the planning commission And that concludes for Lanier Avenue, sir.
All right. Appreciate it. Any questions of Art? Yes, Meg.
I have been over there and looking around at this property as well as the others that are there, and I'm wondering if the developer or the builder has suggested or has shown you any possible photographs or suggested any price points for these homes?
I'm not sure about the price points. I think we did talk about the renderings. I think they're still working through that right now, is that right? And it will have to go through design review, so I think they have not settled, maybe not have settled on exactly the footprint slash the design of the homes, but they would have to go through design review. So if approved, it would come back before council for each of the homes for council's review.
All right. Thank you, because I noticed that when you first come down Lanier, those houses there on the left are mostly brick, and they're on pretty good-sized lots. They're not too close together. So I'm just concerned about how three houses on just a little over an acre, those kind of close together, fitting in with the neighborhood.
I think typically with, you know, with infill development, developers, designers really look at exactly what you just mentioned. They look at what's existing in an area, looking at the property that they have to work with, and looking to see what design or designs really fit well into that particular neighborhood so that it just comports well. And so I'm sure that the developer is working with their design team to ensure that what they want to bring to council, they feel confident that council would be supportive of as well as the existing neighbors.
That's great, because I'm a little concerned, a 4,000-square-foot home is quite large, and so I just think that's not going to be in the affordable category, and I think that affordable there is the key for that neighborhood, since it's directly across from the AmeriGasPropane Company and the railroad tracks. So I think that, but I'm sure they've looked into that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure they have as well. They wouldn't invest in new construction if they didn't think the market could sell those homes, but.
And that's been our conversations with applicants, that they've investigated the property and probably why they didn't maybe want to submit something that if they wanted to, weren't 100% sure on what they wanted to show council right now. But if the zoning is approved, then again, they would come back before council for the design review, and then that hopefully will give them adequate time to make sure that the footprint and the aesthetics of the home that are proposed, or homes that are proposed to go would conform well with the existing neighborhood.
And DRB can include materials used and this and that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else, Meg? Anything from anybody else? Yes, Gary.
Okay. So looking at this illustration you've got here, and this is going to RS 72, maybe that's the answer to it, but on the front here, it shows 35-foot setback, where the ones we were considering earlier in the agenda were 45 feet. Is that the difference? And I guess the others were possibly RS 100, and this is RS 72. Is that what the, why this is 35 foot instead of the 45 that the other has?
What was the, you were mentioning which of the one, Gary?
Numbers one and two that we discussed on the agenda, right on Sycamore.
Oh, the ones on Sycamore.
Right.
Oh.
So those, they were asking to go from 45 to 35, and that required a variance. This is showing 35 here, but I only heard a variance mentioned on the side setbacks, not the front. So I'm assuming then that 35 is allowed and not a variance?
Yeah, that should be right. That's 35.
Okay. But is that because it's RS 72? Okay. All right. Good. And the second question I have is on the side setbacks, which I'm not a fan of varying, but I look here and I see at least on the middle one and on the others as well, it looks like they potentially might meet, say, a 10-foot setback on the front, but because the lot tapers, they need seven on the rear. Can you give me measurements on what those actually are? Just for Monday, go back, before Monday, go back to the developer and say, we want, what are the measurements from property line to the front of the home?
Oh, yes. Okay.
Because I think it appears to me they only need the seven because of the rear of the home would extend over it due to the taper of the lots, right? So potentially, we've got a situation where they're 10, 12 feet or more to the property line on the front, but the lot narrows, right? So that's maybe a bit more palatable to me than it's just seven all the way and it's like a little narrow alley, right? So that's what I'm asking for, is if you can tell me what those distances are potentially along the length of the house, at least in the front and the back from the property lines on all three of those.
Okay. I think I got you. Yes, sir. Okay. Yes.
And Art, and just to add to what Gary's saying, if you look at Lot 3, the front of the home looks closer to the line on the side. And then as you get further back, it actually looks further apart. So I think what Gary's saying is you could have a situation there where maybe, I would say, if it has to be seven foot, it's gonna apply to the narrowest part.
Right.
Very front, but in the back, it could be 10 or 11.
I think that's the opposite, right? Or is
Well, I'm looking at Lot 3. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, the deck. You're right.
Yeah, the deck's on the rear. But yes, so that's what I was trying to get a better idea of. How much actually were you varying? Is it seven on the whole thing versus, and technically, we would have to do that, right? It's seven on the whole thing, but it just gives me a better distance of, what is the distance between those houses, right? Is it 14 everywhere, or is it 20 in the front and 14 in the back? Right? That's what I'm trying to avoid is stacking them so close together.
I got you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, like if you look at Lot 2, Gary, the front part is way, way
Exactly. Yeah, but I don't know how much that distance is. I mean, if I assume that's seven there, you know, on a scale, then maybe that's another two, maybe it's 10. I don't know. But yeah, if we could just have some clarification on that.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We'll move on past Hannah Street to item number eight. I'm sorry. It's item number seven. That is Hannah Street. Swimming pool.
Yes, sir. This is a design review application in the Central Business District, number 25001, 4934 Hannah Street. This is a request for design review for an in-ground pool. The recommended action is approval of the site plan and buildings and material and architectural detail with the following conditions, that the final designs shall substantially resemble the attached exhibits labeled, exhibit one. Here is the home here, Hannah Street, highlighted in the purple. You can see the zonings of RS 150, BG, and RS 100. Here is the survey and site plan showing the existing home and the proposed pool. They are not requesting any variances. The property requires a design review. It is an in-ground pool, so there's, you won't really see, unless you're there, the structure itself, but. And again, the staff recommendation is approval with the final designs substantially meeting those as a label in exhibit one. And of course, should this be approved for design review, it'll go through the required permitting and inspections through our office.
All right. Thank you, Art. Could you go back to the previous page that shows, and that one? Just I wanted to see what else was around it.
Oh, yes.
All right. Any questions?
I have one. If you can go back to the previous illustration there, maybe it was on there and I just didn't see it. Okay, there. So I saw it talking about a five-foot self-closing gate there. I didn't determine, so that whole perimeter is fenced in, is it? And that fence runs to the property line? I just wanted to make sure if we were dealing with a fence and it had to be reviewed, that maybe we dealt with it at the same time as we worked with the pool. So are there any, is that design review or anything required on the fencing as well?
I don't believe so, because I don't believe we require, well, as part of an in-ground pool, from my understanding, from my memory.
I mean, they have to have a fence.
Fence required, but not for the design review itself.
Okay. Yeah, and it would be, require permit. I didn't know if it required designer view or anything like that. Okay, as long as it's considered taken care of, you know, maybe you need to check in, whatever.
And we'll double-check that just to be certain.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I think this is a new build, right? Didn't it come before us before? This is never.
The house itself.
Yeah.
I think, we discussed, I think it came a couple of years ago.
Okay. I think that did come through us previously. Got it. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. All right. So we are done with old business and new business, and we will move on to city manager. I'm sorry. I'm off tonight bad. Item number eight, last one.
Last one tonight, council. This is a request to, for re-adoption of our official zoning map. So the, here's showing the entire city of Sugar Hill with the zonings for all the parcels, descriptions of the zonings themselves and overlays. Mr. Mayor and Council, our ordinance requires an annual adoption of the zoning map, and I think it's been a few years since that has happened, and what staff would like to do is to go ahead and re-adopt, and this is current through, I think, middle of last month, because we wanted to try to capture any approvals from last month's meeting with annexations, rezonings. So we wanted to get to a current state with an adopted map, and then what staff is proposing to do is annually either at the very end of the current calendar year or very beginning of the new calendar year to have an annual re-adoption. That's just really important to make sure that we have an annual, an annual adoption of the zoning map for various reasons that come up. If we're applying for a grant or, you know, something along those lines, that's a typical question or certification that is often asked for, and really, it's good business practice for the community to keep that. And of course, officially, every time the council approves an annexation or rezoning or special use or along those lines, it's updated, but we want to make sure that there is annual, a formal adoption, which encapsulates the number of council actions that were approved in that calendar year, and that is reflective on the, on the map that we have in office, that we have on the website, and that way we have consistent information across the board to the public.
Got it. And so just to restate it, we're not changing any zonings, we're just updating the map to reflect the actions that we have taken as the city council.
That's correct. So this will get us to right now in the midpoint of the year, and then toward the end of this year, very beginning of 2026, we'll come back and ask for the same.
Okay. I think Gary's got a question.
So the question I had just asked Frank, and correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, I'm gonna put words in your mouth, but the question I asked was, if this map contains something inadvertent that didn't match the zoning, which would take precedence, this map or the actual zoning case that we had? And Frank indicated to me that the map would take precedence, right?
The zoning classification on the map would be the zoning classification.
The zoning classification on the map would be the zoning classification on the property at that point. Now, it's subject to the conditions that were previously approved, but the zoning classification could potentially get changed.
Right. So with that in mind, I need to see two maps. I need to see the current map. I need to see the new map, and then highlighted what the changes are, just so we know for sure what it is that we're voting on the changes there. If the precedence were the other way, then it wouldn't be as big a deal. Right? Is that something you can provide?
We'll look, we'll look to see if we can, we'll work with what we have to see what will look, I say readable, legible, so we can see about the list of changes that we've had. Now...
I don't care so much about the colors on there. I want to highlight which ones have changed and what they've changed from and to, right? And if you need more time than Monday, then I'd rather delay it, because I don't want to vote on it without making sure I know what I'm voting on.
Right, yes, sir. And we probably want direction from Council to see how many years back, would you want this past current year, past year, or maybe the past two or three years?
When was the map last adopted?
Do you remember that?
I need to see all of them.
Twenty-seven, five, yeah.
So, I mean, if, there's not a rush on doing this. We're just doing this because we should do it annually, and so.
That's right.
Haven't, but to catch up, we want to do all these five years at a time. I need to see what all those are.
We'll start working on that and then see the progress that we're making and everything. And we, it may be something, we may need a bit more time just to make sure that we capture everything.
I think you're going to need more time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Don't need to beat around the bush. You're going to need more time to do that.
Yeah.
And it sounds good to me. I'm not trying to hide anything, so, but I get, I get the point and the reason behind being able to know what the changes are. But ultimately, we're going to know what he tells us anyways. And so unless you go back yourself and look at all that stuff, you're not going to know for real or not, but appreciate the effort.
Mayor, I would just note that if, if you have the public hearing, if you go ahead and have the public hearing, even if you're not ready for the vote on Monday night, then you don't have to re-advertise it. But if you don't have the public hearing on Monday night and table it, you would have to re-advertise the public hearing for your next meeting. Just keep that in mind.
That's good to know. Thank you. All right. Anything else on this one? All right. Next, we'll move on to, I think I'm done. We'll move on to the discussions and the updates from the City Manager.
Yes, let me, let me start by thanking the IT staff for helping us last week and this week with the replacement of the projectors in this room. Hopefully, the public sees the difference. It was hard to really see the items being projected on there. And you can, let me connect here and you'll kind of get a better idea of what my slides look like. But I wanted to mention that we repurposed a few of them from another building. So other than some staff time, we were able to do that in-house. So thank you to Ned and Jonathan, who may be in the back room back there. I wanted to actually update you on the Transco Meter Station upgrade project. That one is, has completed the design phase, went to out-for-bid earlier in June. There was a pre-bid meeting that was held about three weeks ago, and there were a good number of bidders that participated in that. But as a part of that, the bids are due this Friday. I anticipate having the final project total on Friday. We do anticipate there being additional costs for that project, so I want to prepare you that one of the items that we'd like to add to the agenda next week is an action item on a potential change order. So the one thing we didn't know about was the construction market in the natural gas industry, and with six months of changes with the new administration, I think we're seeing a little bit more demand for those services. So I'll just mention that. I'll tell you a little bit more on Monday night what that looks like, and then I'll save the rest for a construction update unless you want me to go ahead and jump in. Okay. So what you see on the screen is one of the projects that we have under construction currently. It's a sidewalk project that will extend a sidewalk on Peachtree Industrial and connect a short gap on Spring Hill, and this is looking to the west on Spring Hill back towards the school from the new Church Street extension. So there's a five-foot section that will tie in a gap on the side. We'll be pushing that up against the curb to avoid relocating that guardrail. And then on the image to the right is that section further up from that. We are working on ecology and history fieldwork for the downtown Greenway LCI project. We've mentioned LCI for the last year or so, but this is mostly funded through that program funds, and it's administered by the Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia DOT. So it's taking some time as we step through all the process involved in that. So this is a way for us to connect the end of the Greenway Trail at Peachtree Industrial on Highway twenty with the end of the bridge. And so I've got two lines shown here, because we don't really have the exact alignment nailed down yet, but something like what is in green there. There are a couple of steps left in the process. Field survey has been completed and reviewed, and then the next is alternatives analysis and concept layouts that will be developed with the draft concept report to be completed and submitted in October. The Highway twenty pedestrian bridge, Greenway Bridge project is still in utility relocation. Ackerman, Novair, the two developers on the north side of the bridge landing area, and Georgia Power have been through four or maybe five iterations of the relocation easement. And also, we've been through three engineers at Georgia Power. So unfortunately, one has passed, and the other two have traded responsibilities in and among the organization. So we're now on our third engineer representing Georgia Power, who has identified where the poles are going and how they will tie into the existing infrastructure. So what you see in the image to the left are the pole and guy wire locations for that area, and then it will drop down underground where the bridge ramp is going. Amshiv has their subs completing production of the bridge elements. Those elements consist of the concrete beams and superstructure, the attachments to the bridge, and any brick and geotechnical work that is necessary to, to build up that lower section where it ties in. Sorry, the word escaped me there for a moment. Still don't have it. I'll come back to it. One of the bigger projects for the year was our road repairs and resurfacing program. We had twenty-eight, excuse me, fifteen streets on the original list that you see here in these neighborhoods. All the paving work has been completed, and then recently, our public work staff did install all the signs and new signs in those neighborhoods. There were additional streets that were added with the LRA program, Local Road Assistance Program, and so that was approved last month. We're still getting the schedule pulled together from Triple R, which is our paving contractor, and we did add that to their contract. And so they are located in these neighborhoods, the Springs, Pine Pavilion Estates, and Hillcrest-Glen, some of the lower-scoring streets for our list. We are working on another project to add some additional work for some of the lower-scoring streets that were identified at the last two meetings. We have a request for proposals out for advertisement now, and that would be for installation of a playground at Ridge Lake Park. This will be behind the existing pavilion, and so it'll be situated overlooking the lake, but behind the pavilion. We have completed repairs and renovations of the Golf Clubhouse. They included repairs to the gables, and that's replacing the fascia boards around the top there and repainting those. In addition, we replaced the flooring in the bar and grill area, in the pro shop, and in the banquet room. So those all have new flooring. They did have carpet squares previously, and it was just hard to keep clean, as you might imagine, with food service areas, and golf cleats tracking in and out of those areas. In addition to that, we did add some solar lighting to the parking lot. And so what this will allow us to do is schedule meetings later in the day or events at the banquet room. So we previously had been limited to the amount of late-night activities that we could schedule there. So this will allow us to rent out the banquet room for more hours of the day. One last project we're working on is cemetery fence improvements and repairs. So we are working on the final easements that we need to get that project out the door. This will most likely be an invitation-for-bid type advertisement. Should be ready to advertise later this month. So this will take some of the decorative fencing and wrap it around both sides, clean up the area behind the old community center distillery, and then add some fencing along the tree line. And this will kind of help some of the cut-through traffic, help protect the grave plots in the back that we've recently laid out. So see our cemetery in the back of the room, so she, I'm sure she'll appreciate that. One last thing I wanted to update, we did pass out some fans at the Sparks in the Park advertising and telling the public about our rebate program. So Natural Gas Connections has completed a lot of marketing activities over the first six months of the year. What you see on the left are some of the ads that go out and where they go out. I'll show in a minute. But this goes out on email, pull up your emails, it'll look something like what you see on the right with information about the rebate program and also the financing that's available through the Gas Authority. So as you'll recall, the funding for the rebate program comes out of the gas budget, but the financing is through the Gas Authority. No cost to the city on the financing. So far, we've had forty-two rebates and fifteen loans that have been approved to over fifty customers, and so that has resulted in about $20,000 of the budget for the rebates being issued, and then loans of up to $40,000 through the Gas Authority. This is the activity, marketing activity throughout the month of May. So you'll see just north of four thousand impressions a day. From what I understand, impressions are when somebody actually makes eye contact with the, with the ad. So I'm not sure how they track that, but it's probably scary, if you think about it, what they know you look at. So, and then that's produced a click rate of about 0.08%.
I think Gary has a question.
Right. So on the Ridge Lake Park playground, maybe I overlooked it, but I don't recall seeing any sort of design or having a discussion on that. We have had some discussion about an adaptive playground. We've had a little bit of discussion about whether it would be better to pair those in one location, so it's a central place to maintain as opposed to spreading those out. So I'm unsure about sending this out for bid when I don't even know what it is, and we haven't really had substantial discussions on what the other playground should be in. Would it be better to combine them or not? Thank you.
I'll speak up. I think we essentially gave direction that we were going to do two separate playgrounds. And that was reflected in the budget that we adopted for 2025. And there's some planning funds that we're about to start utilizing. We're actually going to begin the process of doing community input for the inclusive park. But it was my understanding that Council was under the understanding that they would be, that the inclusive park would be a different, a different park. So, and I'm glad for anybody else to weigh in.
I thought we would have some discussion before we went out to bid and determine if that were the case. I know we did put some planning funds in there, but I just figured...
The planning funds were for the inclusive park itself.
Right.
Not to discuss the location of the park. We already have a location for the inclusive park that we discussed as a City Council, so.
Right. And I don't think we determined that that was, or I didn't understand that was a final decision on that's what we were doing there.
It's not a final decision until we actually receive community input and then you budget for a new park. So we only put in, I can't remember how much money, we put in money for the planning of the park. So the planning will be around the particular piece of property that we have in mind, but I would imagine that a design could be used for, for any location, as long as it fits in a, in a footprint. But, and this is not what it's going to look like. This is just an image of what a playground, what a playground could look like at Ridge Lake Park. But I happen to like the design that I see, but...
And I'll just say that the reason we chose the RFP method is we don't really have the improvements picked out. We're going to rely on a playground, certified playground installer and designer to provide ideas of what it would look like. So you'll see that. You'll see the potential award or more discussion on locations. But the Ridge Lake Park location, I think, has been through a pretty significant public involvement process when we purchased, shortly after we purchased the property. But I think there's plenty of room at the park for whatever we want to add to it, should we want an inclusive component.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Meg?
On the pedestrian bridge, during all of these changes with engineer and all the utilities and everything, has anything with the design of the bridge itself changed?
It, no, it has not.
All right. Anybody else? Paul, you've got some additional updates. Go ahead.
Victoria put on your, on your, what are you, the June Staff Training Certifications and Conference Report summary for your edification. Then I also want to give you an update on our 2024 audit. It has been completed. The audit document has been dated in June by our auditor. There were no findings, and they've given the highest statement of unmodified, which used to be defined as unqualified. And they ended with a, with a healthy, I think, fiscal position. They'd like to add this to the agenda for Monday, for Mauleyn Jenkins to present the audit for your acceptance. And once again, I want to thank all of our staff and our finance department for working with the auditor and to answer the numerous, numerous, numerous questions they rightfully have and should have, as these are public funds. So the audit would be presented for your acceptance on Monday.
Paul, can you give us a copy of the audit before?
What do you mean?
Can you give us a copy of the audit report before then?
Yeah, I will, I will talk to the auditors. They were on vacation all last week, so.
You've got it. If we don't have it before our City Council meeting on Monday, I'd like to wait until the previous month. I just think that that is, that is what we operate under here, the agreement that we have.
I mean, they've completed the audit, though, so they should have documents prepared. As I get them, I'll put them in your mailboxes and email you that they're available.
All right.
Lastly, Chief King submitted a resignation several weeks ago. Deputy Chief Marshall Wayne Smith has been, Andy Till has been serving as the interim chief, and I'm proud to announce that Andy has been promoted to chief. He has earned the trust and respect of not only the marshals that, I mean, our Marshals Department, but of the entire staff in the city. And I would ask that you would just please join me in congratulating Andy on his new position. He comes to us, he came to us with high recommendation and endorsement from the City Manager of Gainesville, where he held a number of positions, and he's served us well for the last three years. I know he'll serve us well for the next five to 10 years. And with that, if you'd just join me in congratulating him. Is it okay for Andy to say a few things?
Of course. Andy's one of the best men I know, so please come up.
Of course. Andy's one of the best men I know, so please come up.
Yeah, I really look forward to this opportunity, working with each of y'all on any projects or direction that y'all would like to see the Marshals Department take on. We are willing to accept any new roles that y'all see fit to help this community be safer in partnership with Bonnet County Police Department and all the other departments within the city. So anything that we can do to better assist the city, we are, that's our main focus at this point. So really look forward to it, embrace this opportunity, and want to thank Mr. Radford for trusting me with this, with this position. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Paul, what else you got? All right. I think that's it from an agenda standpoint. And as I said, there's, has been no express need to go into executive session. I know there's some things that we can talk about next Monday night. Is there a motion to adjourn our July work session?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Meg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Gary. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are adjourned until next Monday for our regular meeting.